Appreciate everyone joining us for the second April meeting here in 2019. The mayor is away on city business, as was announced earlier, so I will be presiding tonight. We want to get started with an invocation by Councilwoman Jennifer Kalmer and our pledge of allegiance by Scott Tipton.
Everyone bow their heads. Heavenly Father, be present with us now, as every member of this council gives of himself to serve the members of his community. Let him make the decisions that will serve each of us and in a manner that will glorify you. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it is.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Are there any members, excuse me, are there any amendments to the agenda tonight by any of the council members?
I'd like to add just a statement regarding utility bills.
Okay, so that would go under, let's call that 13B1. I'll go ahead and make my addition that would be to add a work session in May to discuss roads and infrastructure.
Is that our first session or second?
Well, I was expecting it to be in addition to.
Okay.
So, we'll call that 13E1. And from the city manager or assistant city manager, any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to remove item 7A, or I'm sorry, 7F, Resolution approving Cable One Agreement Regarding City Hall, Bayside, Nature Center, and Lake Avenue. We'll bring that back for consideration after revision in the future. And then also to remove from executive session, transaction of business and discussions or negotiation regarding the location, relocation, or expansion of a business, medical service, or industry.
Okay, and I think there was one other addition or amendment that was discussed, and that was removing not the, well, do we remove 11A since Sherrod could not be here?
Yes, if you will remove 11A, and we will bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So many.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We'll move on now to the mayor's youth council. Are there any members of the mayor's youth council here in attendance? Hearing none, thank you very much. Now, we'll have a proclamation by Councilman Matt Parker for the Fair Housing Month in April.
All right, whereas April 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the signing of Title Eight of the 1968 Civil Rights Act as amended, which guarantees fair housing opportunities for all Americans, whereas the provision of fair housing opportunities for all citizens in the state of Mississippi is vital to the health and well-being of our citizens and communities, and whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing due to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status, or disability, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, state and local governments, fair housing organizations, concerned citizens, and the housing industry work together to achieve the goal of fair and affordable housing for all residents, and whereas by supporting and promoting fair housing and equal opportunity, Mississippi is creating vibrant communities in our counties, state, nation, and encourages others to abide by the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Act. Now therefore, I, Dane Maxwell, Mayor of Pascagoula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you much, Matt. And we also have a second proclamation that will be read by Reverend Willie C. Davis for the National Day of Prayer.
Reverend Dr. Willie C. Jones, it's been a long day for us.
Been a long day.
It's been a long day. Testing, testing, one, two, am I? Proclamation, whereas the history of our nation is indelibly marked with the role that prayer has played in the lives of individuals, Americans, and the United States as a whole, whereas our greatest leaders has always turned to prayer in times of crisis, and whereas the 68th Annual National Day of Prayer with the national theme, "Prayer for America. Love one another," and the theme is verses St. John 13, Chapter 34, verse, "Love one another, just as I have loved you." Whereas this will take place on May the 2nd, 2019, when millions will unite in prayer as thousands of events take place from coast to coast, and whereas they acknowledge that prayer is a personal experience of one's hope and aspiration, sorrows and fears, remorse, and renewed resolve, praising and thanksgiving, and love towards God Almighty. Now therefore, I, Dane Maxwell, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, Mississippi, do hereby declare Thursday, May the 2nd, 2019, as National Prayer Day, of National Day of Prayer. In the City of Pascagoula, we may meet the challenges that lie before us of courage, wisdom, and justice. Dane Maxwell, Mayor.
Thank you, Reverend Jones. Appreciate that. And next one will be Business Spotlight, and that is Turf Masters Lawn Care.
Nineteen years ago, Pascagoula native Steve Jordan started Turf Masters Lawn Care. Many of you are familiar with the Garden Center located on Telephone Road that showcases a variety of both indoor and outdoor plants and lawn accessories. Turf Masters is home to eight greenhouses where they grow seasonal plants and flowers all year round. They are dedicated to commercial and residential grounds maintenance and enhancing landscaping. After building a successful business, Steve Jordan spends a lot of his time giving back to the community. Through programs like Visions of Sugarplums, Each Christmas, to the Coast Baseball Academy, he makes sure children in our area have what they need to thrive and grow in Pascagoula. Thank you, Steve, and Turf Masters, for helping our community in so many ways.
There are a lot of businesses in Pascagoula that go above and beyond the call in terms of work that they do, not only to support the city itself, but a lot of activities, especially for youth programs, but none of them hold a candle, or none of them exceed, rather, what Steve Jordan and Turf Masters do. And I've really not gotten to know that until I came on this council, and he is truly, truly a great corporate citizen for Pascagoula. Small corporate citizen, but ever-growing, but thank you very much, Steve, and everybody at Turf Master. All right. All right, next item is 6A. This will be a public hearing. This is a request to rezone certain properties in the area, east of Fair Street and south of Pascagoula Street, from single-family residential six, some to commercial and others to light industrial. This is a matter that was presented by the, by code enforcement and zoning at the fire meeting. This is an action that's being taken from the planning commission, and as everyone knows, the final arbiter of that is this body, the city council. We heard from not only Donovan Scruggs, but we heard from a number of citizens, residents who live in that area. We delayed or tabled this issue in order to give the owner of Pavco, David Bowlen, a chance to come up and speak to us tonight, and so, David, the podium is yours.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was not able to make the last meeting, but I did watch some of the effects on Facebook of what happened and what took place, but there's a lot of misstatements made in that meeting, and just wanted to clarify some of those up with the council. The property across the street has been in, another clarification, I did not own Pavco, I'm just the president of it. My mother actually owned the business. The industrial space, the property that we'd like to zone industrial was built in 1970. It has been utilized for many different things. If you want to pull up that satellite map, you can find out where it is and give you some reference points. But past use is over, and the other property was built in the 1960s. Actually, there was a building on it before that, from the Sandberg maps.
Are we still talking about, David, the area that you're requesting to zon light industrial?
Yeah, well, light industrial, we're going to light industrial first, and then we'll move to the community commercial.
All right.
The light industrial property since the 70s has been a storage facility and retail sales, it has been a fiberglass boat building business, a record storage, a steel fabrication company, a mobile refrigeration manufacturer, industrial pipe and fitting warehouse, and currently it's been boat repair, fiberglass and mechanical boat repair. It is a 15,000 square foot building with high ease, large lighting, and back in '07, we spent over $50,000 upgrading that building with an elevated office space and upgraded electrical compressor, that type of stuff for the fabrication facility that went in there. The space next door, about two years ago, we acquired the, what I call the Bardwell Building, which was Bardwell Cabinets. We acquired it, and basically we acquired it to give some buffer to our facility across the street, as well as the 4700, the large warehouse across that next door. It was actually over the property line back in the 70s. They didn't take a lot of, if you look at the zoning map of that area, you'll see quite a few properties are over the line of what their property was. They didn't look at where they built it, I guess, but to clear up a property, potential property dispute, we went ahead and fired that building. The Bardwell Building was in need of repair, quite a bit of repair. Since we purchased it, we have spent quite a bit of money upgrading that, the home or the old gas station that was turned into a home, spent a lot of money redoing it, landscaping, different things like that. Currently, our plant manager lives in that building. It's nice to have somebody close at hand when you're having an industrial facility close, you know, close by. Basically, having a key holder next door is a nice thing to have for merchant services and different things. The planning commission, or the planning commission voted five, four to one, an approval of rezoning this. The reason for this rezoning is because, you know, as you go forward and want to open and develop new businesses and do different things with your property, it's nice to have the proper zoning. The zoning was an overlay zoning back, I don't know, 20, 30 years ago, and these structures were already there, and it was residential, single-family residential. You know, why is it single-family residential? I'm really not sure. Well, is it single or is it R6?
I think it's single-family residential.
Single-family, high-density, single-family. However, you'll see a lot of areas, there's a quad right behind it, there's another quad around the corner, it's in the same zoning, and you don't, you don't have them tear it down, you just deal with what you have, but it is nice to have the proper zoning for the buildings, so you can move forward and not have to be delayed in your process. Went to the city, went to voting department, said, hey, we're starting to do this. We had this other building that we're, want to utilize in some form or fashion, not really sure what we want to do with it, but I think we need, neither one of them are single-family residential, so, you know, can we get this straight? Donovan agreed that, you know, it was miszoned, thought it was appropriate force to go take it to do that, and so, that's what we did. Any questions?
Questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. So, have you tried or even made an effort to communicate with the citizens that lives in that area? Have you met with them for discussion? Because that's my ward, and they are not pleased with this idea. They are totally against it.
I know most of them. I've met with most of them over the years. I moved here.
No, recently?
Recently, I have talked, I've spoken with them after the meeting. We spoke at the planning, the planning meeting quite a bit. We spoke in the, in the street after the planning meeting, planning meeting that was, you know, that was done, out in the parking lot here. They didn't have a problem with the rezoning, they just wanted to know what was going on, so they said. Now, a lot of the, a lot of the discussion was about, you know, 18-wheelers and trucks. I do have some issues with those residents. I mean, I have one that is going out and talking my truck drivers and telling them that they are working with the police and the zoning, and they don't need to be coming down Market Street. I have another resident that is actually, when trucks are backing in, are stopping their car, blocking the trucks, and then moving up, blocking the truck again, getting out, videotaping. It's not a great situation to, you know, try to have a meeting with them. And, you know, the, I have met with them, I've offered up, not met with them, all the group. They have not, I've offered to do that, and I did offer that, and no one showed up for it. That was early on in this process, and then I found out during that planning commission meeting, you know, what their intentions were, I guess. There was some discussion about the easement that goes through, there's an easement to service these four residences here through this property. There was some discussion about that, the maintenance of that, or the condition that that easement is in. I offered if they wanted to bring dirt in or crush and run, I offered to spread it. One of the residents that lives back there said, we've done it, it doesn't last, it doesn't hold up. I have also met with Pandell to look at taking a drive, doing a private drive. We did meet, I did meet with Pandell on where the oak tree was, and we do have space that we could take some geo bricks around the oak tree to protect it and do a private drive and come in, cut the curve, do asphalt drive to those locations. It would still be on, on our property, and we can move the easement from there to the other spot. If the residents back there want to share in the cost of that, Pandell had quoted a price, just a ballpark estimate of $17,000 to do that. So, I mean, there are, you know, I'm trying to work with the areas best I can, and I'm trying to work with the city the best I can, but, you know, it's, it's a problem that was created when, when there was overlay zoning, and I'm just trying to straighten it out.
David, it may not be apparent to people either watching at home or here in the audience, but this, what's on the screen is a, it looks to be a satellite map, and it has 2007 on it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you go down to Fair Street, where it intersects with Pascagoula, between, I'm going to call it Bardwells and the street, there's a structure there. Is that a home?
Which, which one are you talking here?
It's, it's, it's hard to get directions. It's on that east corner, right there, where you're pointing. Is that?
This is a slab. This was, this was part of the Bardwell Cabinet Buildings. It has since been torn down. There are a number of slabs over here that were utilized back in the day, but there are slabs, they're all structures, this structure is here, this structure, this structure.
Right. Well, and I used to drive up there almost every day when I was a youngster. My father lived off of River Road, and I don't remember that particular structure being a, a commercial building. I remember it being a residence, and remember what everybody said who did speak, but if there's something in particular about what's been said tonight that you wish to respond to, I'm going to give you the opportunity to do so. So, if you'd like to come up?
Hello. Okay, the first thing I'd like to clarify, he has never tried to speak to us, and I'm sure as you're, you could hear, there are several other neighbors over there he's not tried to communicate with. This meeting that he said he tried to do, I don't know who he talked to, because it wasn't none of us, and there's only four houses back there, and one's a duplex, so, it's, it's not been, he's tried to work with us or let us know, and I still don't agree with it getting zoned commercial, because he still can't tell us what he's going to do with it. You go, and there's no telling in a few months what we're going to be dealing with, and my house is to the back doors of those, and if he starts running boats in and out like he does the other one, I'm going to be blocked in, and I'm also not for moving the easement, because I'm going to fight that too, because I don't want all that traffic in front of my house, like I, I went through last time.
I don't think there's, I don't think on the table is moving an easement. We don't have, we don't have any authority over that.
He mentioned it and said that he could preserve the oak tree, but that's still, that's not the answer.
Understand. I just let you know, we're, we're not dealing with an easement tonight.
Yes, I know, I know, but, um, yeah, because, I mean, he, he still can't tell us what's intended for it, and if it's commercial, can you still have somebody living there? Because if she's for the Pavco key holder, that's not Pavco. And I'm just, this is all my concerns.
Any member of the council have questions? And I'm sorry, could you tell us your name for the record?
It's Hannah Lesby.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from anybody?
Yes, I'm not very familiar with this situation, but what street, what's the name of your street?
I'm on Pascagoula Street.
Oh, you're on Pascagoula.
But if you go, but I'm like down the easement that we're talking about, like, if you go, there's the big industrial building, and there's the little residential building. If you took that drive and you went all the way back to the right, that's my house over there. And like I said, if he opens the back doors and has boats going in and out like the other, I'm going to be blocked in, and that's my concern, and like I said, he can't state what he's going to do, and I do not, as far as I recall, and I'm 26, that hasn't been a garage in that house. The Bardwells have always lived there. You can ask some of the other neighbors, they've been there longer, maybe they've seen more, but...
Do we have any of the photos that Mr. Scruggs had the last time we met? They were a little more up to date.
I've got the ones that were in the packet. You talking about these or?
Yeah, or even the map that he had.
The map, yeah.
Had the, the color-coded, hang on.
You have all of them, Caroline, the sections after night?
I apologize, Caroline.
No.
David, real quick, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but just while we're waiting, David, my, one of my big problems with this, what?
I was making sure.
Okay, okay, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to put Mr. Bond out here.
Yeah, okay. David, one of the problems I have, and it's almost a visceral reaction with me, is changing this to light industrial. It allows for a lot of potential uses beyond what is being used now, and it would literally put it on top of a residential area, and I can envision maybe long after you're gone or, you know, you're no longer president, that some uses with that property could be made by subsequent owner, that we, at that point, have no right to control, because it's within the allowed uses for light industrial. So, knowing that concern, I'd like for you to just address that real quick.
There already is industrial use across the street, it is not a dead center of a, for a single-family residential. The, you know, Pavco has been, been there, it's been an industrial site for a long time. The light industrial, if you look at the zoning of light industrial, and you look at the other locations where light industrial is applied to Pascagoula, they're, you know, they're close to other industrial areas, they're also have structures that are similar in nature to this. This is actually a larger structure than a lot of the other areas that are light industrial. Light industrial is, I mean, Pavco is actually more of a heavy industrial use than a light industrial. So, you know, when I'm asking for a light industrial, you know, they're thinking that, oh, it's more Pavco, but light industrial is, is not, Pavco is actually grandfathered in, and is more apt to a more heavy industrial-type operation. It just has very, it's a very light, heavy industrial. I mean, if you really want to know the truth, versus a Chevron or an Ingalls or something like that. But, I mean, I have, working, you know, giving you an example, we had, I was working on our center this weekend, you know, I worked on it for about two hours on one day and one hour on the next day, and had to turn the dust system on, because that's part of, you know, what you do when you run that machine, you have to run it, you have to test it, and low and behold, they called the police on me to say that I'm making noise. Well, I'm sorry, but that's part of, of the operation of that business.
Do we have a noise ordinance that allows you? We don't?
No, we do not have a noise ordinance that does not allow, I mean, your noise ordinance does not say that you cannot, you know, make noise. I mean, I'm, especially, I mean, you do have a noise running at 10 o'clock at night, I believe, for some locations. I'm not sure how it applies across the board, but...
What are your normal hours of operation? I'm showing my ignorance now, but what, what are you, what are your normal hours of operation?
Normally, we open, we fire up the bull, we're at 5:00 in the morning, we're operating at 6:00, and try to get out of there, but, and typically, we run about 4:00 in the afternoon. Sometime, we work Saturdays in the past, you know, we work Sundays, we do maintenance on weekends.
So, you can understand why, I'm sorry. So you can understand maybe why a Saturday or Sunday, or especially a Sunday, if you were there on Saturday and Sunday doing that.
Ma'am, it is, it is part of an operation. Do you tell Chevron you can operate on Sunday?
No, we don't, but boy, they're way out away from houses, and you're right in the middle of a residential area.
The East Bank is, is firing back up, is that correct? And I hear it all the time, and I'm actually just purchased a house this week that directly looks onto the East Bank.
You hear what all the time?
Noise, operation, industrial operation, process.
From the East Bank? I'm just curious, because I went on a tour of the East Bank not too long ago, and you must be hearing something else.
Do you not think the East Bank will be operating 20%?
I don't want to argue with you about that, Mr. Bowlen.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the council?
Well, I have one, Mr., the building you're talking about that you run the center in, is the Pavco or it's?
Yes, it's actually Pavco.
Yeah, so, that's not even on our radar, so I think if we can stick to the two pieces of property, and my question is, and I understand, and you have a major investment there, and I, and to me, unlike Councilman Burrows, is I think we need to find a good compromise, because you have an investment, the homeowners have an investment, they have quality of life, you have to run a business, so, to me, I mean, to me, it only just makes sense that we could do community commercial on both pieces of property. I asked Donovan last time, you would continue to be able to do your boat repair business, and then it would also, if you, for some reason, wanted to do some light industrial later on, it could come back before the council then, and we could discuss it again and see if it's a good fit, but in my mind, I've made up my mind that I can vote for community commercial on both pieces of property, but I cannot do light industrial at this point, not knowing what's going in in the future.
And I appreciate that, and I, you know, that does not affect it, I'm, what I, you know, and I would be, I would be fine with that today, however, I just want to express that with the size of the building and the use that, you know, would fall in that.
Right.
It could cause headaches in the future, and I'm trying to avoid that as I come forward.
And I understand perfectly, like I said, I know you've put a lot of money and investment in it, and, you know, it is something, so, like I said, in my mind, I've, I've made up that I can deal with.
If y'all would like, I can, you know, re-amend my request to community commercial.
I think we can just make the motion tonight, could?
Well, before we do anything, I'd like for you, if you would, take a seat, and I'd like to hear from, I think we need to hear from the other residents. I mean, you've heard now some other comments from him, I want to give you all an opportunity to respond to anything that you've heard tonight. Want to give you all an opportunity to respond to anything that you've heard tonight, anything that you wanna say. Sure, come on up. Just make sure you tell us your name.
My name's Billy Weiss and I'm right behind that warehouse with my old head joint. And I'm hearing this light commercial and whatever. I just wanna know, you said that if he's gonna put something there, you gotta come back before the council if there's something gonna go in there. The land's vacant now. And if he decides to put something there, do we, do you give a proposal to what it gonna be?
Well, I hate to say that because when you say the land is vacant, I'm not sure which land we're talking about.
Oh, the, the land beside the little white house? The, the land to the right where he's got the boat motor, where you do the hot motor? That vacant loft right there next to it.
So you're talking about between the driveway and where that, the boat repair shop is?
Yeah, and I live right, my loft, John's there is right there.
Okay.
I mean, I'm hearing commercial and this and that, but I just wanna know. If something's gonna go in there, did we know? You gotta go back before the council to what's going in there?
Well, it, it normally, if it, if it falls within the parameters of, you know, uh, community commercial, then no, they can just get a permit and they can go forward. If it's something that is outside those parameters, uh, if they wanted to put, I, I'm just pulling things out of the air. If they want to put a machine shop, and a machine shop's not allowed under community commercial, then they'd have to come get a special variance or a special use permit. And you would be notified. All the residents would have an opportunity then to object. It just depends on what future use is contemplated, and that's kind of the big unknown. We don't know what the future uses.
What can you put on commercial?
I, I would have to defer to Donovan Scruggs. I, I don't know all the possible uses for all the potential zoning that, that could be changed to.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Bowlen some questions?
Sure.
Would you be willing to sit and work with those neighbors? Because I've seen several photos of your truck drivers. And I've seen tarps in the middle of the road. And I've seen, um, and I've actually driven down there myself and since we had the council meeting where they came. And I've sat and watched and I've taken photos myself. And I've seen your truck drivers take up one and a half lanes of a two-lane road. And I've seen, um, your employees park down what looks like, and I don't know, because I don't know where the city easement is, but it looks like what is the city easement. So if I have a flat tire, I don't know where I'm gonna pull over. And you seem to have a big lot where they could park, but they're parked right, right up next to the road.
Right.
And where your loading dock is, the size of 18-wheelers nowadays, if an 18-wheeler backs down in there to come up to your loading dock, that thing has got to take up the whole road and turn. So I think there are some valid issues that these folks have that we really need to take into consideration before we jump out and approve anything. And until we go down there and look ourselves and we know what the real issues are, I don't know how we can approve these. Or say, "commercial" or "light industrial," or anything else because these folks have some really valid issues.
Are your issues that you're bringing up have nothing to do with the property at hand? Do you understand that?
No, I don't understand that because these trucks are coming to your property.
No, they're, but this, this is property across the street. You're talking about property, you're, you're, you're talking about an area that's not incorporated with this property. That's a, that's a completely different issue.
Okay, if you, okay, if we're gonna talk about the south side of the street where the boat manufacturer, or whatever that is over there, I looked at that property too. And there's lots of dust that flies out of there and that kind of thing. And these people's homes are right behind there. And they have small children. And I, I do get splitting the price of the private drive. That's something that y'all should work out before we agree to this. And I realize that is not up to us. But there has to be some type of agreement between all of you. We, and I realize that we're not the mediators in all this. But we can't just put a, we're supposed to be the city council. We're supposed to be here for all of the citizens. We're not supposed to be here just for, just for commercial folks. I mean, we're supposed to be watching out for all these folks too. And I'm sorry, that's, that is who I'm concerned with at the moment because I sat down there and watched. And I, and I'm, I saw all the dust flying out the back window. And if my kids were down there trying to play in the yard, they can't. They can't. And you wouldn't let your kids play out there, behind there either.
I would, and they do. And if you come by, you'll see my kids throwing the football in the vacant lot with the neighbor's kids. My, well, my, my plant manager's grandson, they're up there quite a bit. So, and we do play out there. I disagree with you.
There being no further questions from the council. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Residents, any, any of you wanna respond to anything that you've heard? This'll be sort of your last, last chance. I mean, come on up. Whoever wants to speak, y'all come on up.
Let's just be quick so y'all can fit somebody else in. My question is, is if he doesn't know what's going in there, why can't it be tabled until he knows what's going in there? That way the neighbors at least have some kind of focus of, hey, this is what's gonna be going on. Could y'all approve this? There's no telling. Just please take that in consideration because if it was y'all's house, y'all would not, y'all would be in my shoes. Just please take that in consideration. And I'm gonna sit down and let somebody else come talk because I've taken up the line.
My name's Eric Richards. I live on Lake Avenue, about a quarter mile west of the Pavco plant. Wasn't aware of the, the rezoning, um, application until just recently because I don't live within like 160 feet of the, of the area. But I can tell you that, that if, if you're talking about light industrial, then I am affected. And so are all the people, at least on the east end of Lake Avenue. So if you're still talking light industrial, I do have some, some big objections and some concerns. And what Ms. Conner was saying earlier when she did talk about the things that go on at Pavco, they are relevant if you're talking light industrial because you're talking about rezoning the other side of the road exactly like Pavco. So things that go on at Pavco currently would then be able to be extended over across the road. So they are relevant to what goes on there. So if we're still talking light industrial, I'll go into my little, my little spiel here.
I, I'm not a mind reader, so I don't know what the rest of the council is thinking.
Well, let me ask the question right off. The, the agenda and the resolution in the agenda only says rezon to, um, community commercial. The March 16th meeting, it did have light industrial, but it does not say light industrial in that resolution in tonight's agenda.
I'll have to let the city attorney respond to that.
There, too, there actually, the orders, or, sorry. The ordinances that were reflected on March 16th, those are still the recommendations that are present tonight. There is one for light industrial, one for community commercial.
So tonight, it's an error that is, it doesn't, it dropped the light industrial?
Yes, but it is on there, yes. That, that is what it was, that was what was tabled for tonight.
Okay, well, if you're still, if light industrial's on the table, then...
It absolutely is.
Okay, let me talk then. I do have two, two main objective, objections to moving forward light industrial. One being the, the, that the history of the Pavco plant, to me, is one of being a poor neighbor to the, to the residents in the area. Uh, and I'll say that based on three things. One is the air pollution, the smoke coming out of the plant, the blocking of the streets with the trucks, and the noise pollution. And again, those are relevant from the Pavco plant because you're talking about rezoning the opposite side of the street exactly like the current Pavco plant. I'm a quarter of a mile away and the air pollution is the biggest one for me. Noise is somewhat an item. The, and I know the neighbors have a problem with the, with the trucks. And I'll, I'll give you an example with this picture and I'll talk to a couple of things from it in regard to the air pollution. Because I'm not, I'm not totally against it in industry, David, and, and please, and I'll finish up with, with that at the end. We're talking about air pollution and that's, I live, again, a quarter mile to the west. The, the plant doesn't put out the smoke all the time. It's a random sort of thing. And sometimes the smoke is just, is really not a real problem. This afternoon, today, the smoke was coming out, going across the fire station. I had to be driving by a stop. Stood there a little bit and to me, that was no, that wasn't an issue. But there's times when the smoke comes out, I can't work in my yard. I'm a quarter of a mile away and I, I can't breathe it because it burns my throat, burns my eyes, and I just can't imagine kids being out in there. I wouldn't, I can't be out there. I have to go back in my house. You can see from the pictures what that looks like. And to get a point of reference, that's from Krebs Lake looking southward. And you see the water tower? That water tower is directly over the Folkerson's house and all of the homes along North Market. To the right of that are all the homes along the east end of Lake Avenue. So you can see there is quite of an impact from the smoke coming out of it. On certain times, this is not all the time, it's just at certain times.
Let me, let me ask you a question. This white, is that, is that white foam in the water? Is that a type of water cool or anything in, in that area?
Uh, that's just sunlight reflection.
Oh, that's just sunlight, that's not foam? That just happened to be in your picture?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Noise pollution, again, not a huge issue for me. I can hear the, the dust collection system pretty loudly in my yard. I can actually hear it inside my house. But I've got a lot of trees, a lot of homes between me and Pavco. That dust collector, I can't imagine how the people that live on North Market Street puts, puts up with it. You know how loud a vacuum cleaner is? Basically, it's my understanding, and I've dealt with, with the torrent dust collection system before, it's basically a, a, a whole house vacuum cleaner, so to speak. And if I say this wrong, they'd correct me, but it basically is, is a vacuum collection system for the plant. You know how loud a vacuum cleaner is? Well, picture one that's 30 feet high. It's quite noisy. And I'll, and I'll say this without knowing the complete reasons why, but it just seems odd to me that when that vacuum system was put in, and I don't know how many years ago it was, it's, it's been quite a number of years, why it was located where it is. It is in the absolute worst possible place you could have put that thing right directly across the street from several houses when, I don't know why it couldn't have been placed on the backside of the building because it's basically ductwork that goes from the, the vacuum cleaner into the facility. I, I just can't imagine why it was placed where it is. Because again, it's just, it's just a terrible thing for those residents. Second objection is the single reason and rationale for the rezoning is quote unquote, "mistake in zoning." I, I can't, in my mind, reconcile that that is a, a good reason to do a rezoning in that a 15,000 square foot warehouse was built on, on a property that was zoned residential and then allowed to operate for 40 some odd years. Yeah, I can see that, hmm, you might call it a mistake. It might have been more, um, I can't imagine not knowing that you're building a warehouse on residential property at that time. And then not only building it there, but then upgrading it as you went along, knowing that you're doing this all on residential property. So I don't, you know, if I were to go do something, build a building, hey, build a warehouse in my backyard and start operating as a commercial entity, I think the, what the, the code enforcement would be on my throat and probably have me take it down. And I'm not advocating shutting this down, by the way. But I can't see it as being a good rationale for, and I'll say it like this, rewarding the entity with an actual upgrade. When that warehouse was built, it was a warehouse. And as far as I know, it was operated as a warehouse for quite a number of years. That's a commercial property. So, you know, I can see maybe going to commercial if you're gonna go with that, you know, mistaken zoning rationale. But why upgrade? Doesn't make sense to me to go even beyond what it was originally built for. And I, let me say right off, my, I spent my entire career in industry. And I know this, this city and this county is based on industry. Our, all of our jobs, most of the jobs in this area are based on industry. So, you know, you, you have to be, um, recognize that industry is a big part of our, our livelihoods. But you also have to understand that the industry has an obligation to the residents around, especially in the case where the industry is located right in the middle of a residential area, which is totally different from most, all the other industries around. They're all, as Ms. Conner stated, they're offset from the residential areas. I understand the East Bank, and you're right, David, is, is sitting right there, but they're not asking to enlarge the East Bank out into, further out into the residential area. And that's where my concern comes from. So in my mind, light industrial would allow the property across the street to be used in the same way that the Pavco plant is. And the Pavco plant currently is, is doing a lot of things that are not residentially friendly. I can't see going light industrial with that. A good compromise to me is the community, um, commercial. You know, you can't take the building down. You're not gonna put him out of business on, on, on that property. I think he's got a right to, to keep that thing going, but only at the, uh, community commercial level.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the residents, neighbors that wanna speak? Yes, ma'am. Just come to the podium and tell us your name.
Debbie Folkerson. We live on Market Street, the very in-house on the water. Sometimes I can go outside in my yard and sometimes I can't. You can't be outside over there if that blower, that vacuum has a blowout. You can't be outside if their stack is blowing black smoke out. They have problems with their machinery. They're not keeping it up. They need somebody who knows the equipment to work on it, to get it to work properly. If he wants to run a business, that's fine. But he needs to do it in the proper way, which is upgrade or fix his equipment.
Mr. Davis, this is your front yard or your backyard, the side of the house?
It's all of them.
Entire yard?
All the way around.
How long, how long has this been in care?
How long has our house been?
No, how long you been dealing with this situation?
Oh.
Not going outside of your own yard?
Oh. Well, at least 20. Because it seemed like we, we... I, I didn't realize everybody else, everybody's just putting up with it. I mean, it depends on the way the wind blows. Most of the time, the wind's from the west. So we do pretty good. But the people on the south or the east, they have more problems than we do. Now, when that dock was built for Pavco, they were unloading trains on the railroad track. They weren't bringing in 53-foot-long trailers with dual cab trucks. They can't back in there without blocking my view. If I go to Market and Pasca Gula and try to pull out or go straight across, I take a chance. And I have had truck drivers approach me telling me they have a job to do. And I'm on Market Street. I, I put up with it a long time. And now that all the neighbors have gotten together and said, oh, yeah, I have the same problem. A lot of them are a lot older than we are. We're kind of the young ones on the block. And we're, you know, approaching 70. But the 90-year-olds and older, what are they gonna do? They have to take care of themselves. They can't come... They can't come up here. And, yeah, David does not work with us. I mean, he believes whatever he wants to do is okay, and that we should have to take it because he's grandfathered. He does have a business, and we want him to keep running. I mean, it's jobs, it's okay. But he needs to keep his equipment up, and he needs to realize fifty-three foot trailers with dual cab trucks run all over everybody's yard up there. He just, you know, and yeah, I've had confrontations with his truck drivers, because they expect me to go up in Alvin's yard to get out of their way. I just don't think that's right. Would you like to run into a truck driver, have him get out of his truck and come after you, when you're on a public street, just trying to get in and out of your home?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give the last word to Donovan Scruggs. Donovan, you've heard a lot, one way or another, do you have anything to add on behalf of the staff?
Do you want me to add anything?
This is, this is totally up to you. If there's something you've heard that you wish to bring to our attention?
You know, I will address a few things. The application that was submitted, we did a notification process, and during that time, we did receive basically no input from surrounding property owners. And oftentimes, you take that as more or less being okay with the request, or having no issues, or certainly none of the issues we've heard tonight or at the planning board meeting. So, the, definitely there are some concerns that may be within the neighborhood. The, there's been some questions, you know, asking, you know, Mr. Bowlen, you know, what he's going to do there. And one of the issues you have when you rezon property is, you, you can say he's gonna do a boat yard, a boat shop, or boat repair business, but the minute it's rezoned to CC or LI, Community Commercial, Light Industrial, then basically any use that is permitted within those districts can go there. So, any use that's allowed in LI can go there, and any use that's allowed in CC can go there, regardless of his plans. He can get run over by one of his big trucks tomorrow, and a new owner comes in, and then they can change the business, to do anything they want to, that's permitted within the CC. You are exactly correct, Mr. Burrow, in that the only thing that would have to come before this body or the planning board would be a use that is allowed by special permit. The CC does allow some more intense uses, but those are only allowed through a special use permit, meaning if you've gotta go to the planning board. So, in, in one aspect, the, the CC would be a, a better fit, in my opinion, than going to LI, and I, I think that would be a step in the right direction. The mistaken zoning is something that is, is not oftentimes used, and it definitely does not mean that a bad judgment was made back in nineteen seventy, or nineteen eighty, or nineteen fifty with the construction. However, one of my issues when looking at this is that the, unlike what was said previously, it's not like he went out there and did improvements and jobs without the approval of the city. The city, for the past thirty, forty, fifty years, have been complicit in allowing him to do, or the owners of Pavco, to do whatever they want to do with their properties, whether it be an expansion, improvements that he mentioned. As you continue to permit and permit and allow a use to go forward, it seems as though that's being done in error, and it, it needs to be corrected. Another thing we have to look at is that if the building does go vacant for a period of six months, it is then becomes, it loses non-conforming status, and it's going to become another vacant building we have here in Pasca Gula. And, and to some people, that may be an improvement, but when, it, it's very hard to address those buildings, as we all know, when we've consistently, you know, called my department to, to try to address those vacant structures. So, it may not be the, the best fit for the neighborhood, but it is something that has been there for a long time, and trying to find some compromise or some middle ground, I think, is a, a good idea. But that's kind of, you know, where we are, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but if not, I can go back in.
Donovan, the current use right now is the boat repair, manufacturer, whatever it is, is that fit community commercial?
That is a permitted use in the CC, yes, sir.
All right. So right now, he's, how is he operating as a single family?
It's the, the non-performing status, that building, I know we went back and found a previous license to at least two thousand and twelve.
So it was permitted in two thousand and twelve?
Yes, yes, I have got a business license for that use at two thousand and twelve, so it has been there, there's been that kind of use in that building, at, at least it was in two thousand and twelve. So it, it does appear to be, you know, consistently commercial in nature. The, as a grandfathered use, you know, what's difficult is trying to determine the intensity of that use. Is it similar to the use that was there previously? You know, trying to judge, is a boat repair business going to be the same as a machine shop or a beauty shop? Which one's more intense, or a record shop? As, as uses change, you know, it, it's very hard for us to track, well, okay, now you've decreased your non-performity to this level, you cannot do anything that is going to increase it from this benchmark. So, you know, getting either, either trying to abate the, the use, or, you know, getting rid of the use, or trying to make it somewhat compliant, is a much better long-term approach for just longevity of the building. A more aggressive approach would probably, I, I believe the expansions that were mentioned earlier tonight, back in oh-seven, you know, probably should not have been permitted. You know, that, had they not been permitted on a fifty thousand, on a, on a, on a building that was out of, that was non-performing, then you would not be here. But nobody wants to, you know, put somebody out of business, especially one that's been in business for thirty or forty years. So not, non-performers are not easy to deal with, and, but we've gotta do it on an original basis, you know, getting the correct zoning in place, or agreeing that the correct zoning is in place. Either way, you know, we will enforce the rules, but we'd rather, you know, know what rules we're enforcing.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. My suggestion to the council is that we divide this in two, since there are two parcels which are requested to be designated as light industrial, and four parcels that are requested to be designated as community commercial. Is there a motion to address, or regarding the two parcels for which a light industrial zoning change is requested?
Stephen, can I request a copy of, we only received one of the ordinances for the light industrial, you have the one from, from our community, Mark?
David, I, I really don't, I'm sorry, I intentionally gave him the last word. Okay?
I would like to point out that we do have a noise ordinance, section fifty-four, one twenty-one, seven.
Now, okay, come on up now, David, you get, you get your chance.
Sorry, but I, I did wanna, do you wanna make that? No.
I thought, I thought the discussion was over with, so come on up.
I was just saying that it would be easier on the council, and I modify my request for my light industrial to all of the community commercial, make it easier on your decision.
All right. All right. I think we're waiting on, Scott, is there a motion you wanted to make, or you need to have the ordinance?
Well, yeah, because I was, I would, I'm assuming that y'all would want me to have the description.
Yeah.
Pretty detailed, so I need to read it from the ordinance.
Well, I'm, for what it's worth, I'm looking at the staff report and looking at the two, the parcel numbers that are requested to be changed to light industrial are end in four oh-seven and four oh-three. I guess, that's my shorthand I'm going to use for that. Yeah, you do, but I want, you spoke, and I'm gonna leave him the right to speak, too. I, that's all I'm doing, I thought it was done. You had a right to speak, I wanna give him a right to speak, that's all, that's all. And you had a right to speak, and I let him have a response. I'm not being a jackass, no, I'm not. I'm trying to run a meeting, thank you.
Hey, Ryan, and this is actually the one I had, but isn't there one where he was actually just asking for a rezoning to commercial, commercial? But this is the light industrial one.
Right, and there's one for the commercial, too.
Okay.
All right, so, so back to the original question. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Brian.
It's essentially, the language of it is identical, with the exception of the reclassification, one would be the light industrial, the other one would be community commercial.
Okay, so do I need to deny the one that's been proposed to us, or can I make a motion and modify the original ordinance?
Well, all you've, sorry, before I get in trouble. All you have to do, what you received from the planning commission was a recommendation to grant. So, what, if, what you're asking is, is that you would want to do as you suggested earlier, and to go with community commercial, what I would do is, if that's what you'd like to do, is a motion to reject or deny the recommendation of the planning commission regarding the change to light industrial. And then, if that passes, then you'd make a motion to make that property community commercial. Does that make sense?
So I would like to make a motion to amend, to deny the amendment to the ordinance number one dash twenty-eleven, to make the property from single-family residence to light industrial.
And just so there's no misunderstanding, we're talking about the two parcels which have the num, end in the numbers four oh-seven and four oh-three, that's the purple area on the map that's up on the screen.
That's correct.
And I'm sorry, could you restate the motion?
Okay. I would like to deny the amended ordinance number one dash twenty-eleven for parcels four oh-seven to four oh-three, from single-family residence six to light industrial. Sir.
Having a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is there a further motion on parcels number four oh-seven and four oh-three?
I would also like to make a, a motion to approve the amended ordinance on number one dash twenty-eleven, to convert from single-family residence six to community commercial for parcels four oh-seven dash four oh-three.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, that leaves now parcels four oh-five, four oh-eight, four oh-six, and four oh-nine. Those are the, well, we had the map. On, on the map, those are the parcels which are, I think were, there you go, that were red. And is there a motion on that request?
Make a motion to amend ordinance number one dash twenty-eleven, to change the zoning, if I heard you correctly, parcels four oh-five, four oh-six, four oh-seven, and four oh-nine, from single-family residence to community commercial.
Actually, it'd be four oh-eight.
Yeah, four oh-five, four oh-eight, four oh-six, four oh-nine, sorry, Stephen, just to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. So the vote is one, two, three. So it's three to three, motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay. All right. So the end result is, the purple parcels on the map have been rezoned to community commercial, and there's no change on the red parcels. Okay? All right. All right, let's move on to the next item in the agenda, and I believe that is, if I can find my copy of it, that'll be the consent agenda. I got it. Yes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, now, we're up to the board interviews, and the first one will be the applicant for the La Pointe Krebs Foundation Board, and that will be the Honorable Robert Krebs.
Thank you for having me, I'll be able, happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm just glad you're willing to serve for another term.
Judge, if you could tell us real quickly, just with a couple of minutes. Excuse me, please, counsel still is conducting business. Judge, if you could tell us real quickly what your duties are on the board, what has happened? We get regular reports from your fellow board members, Liz Ford among others, and I think it would just be good for us to hear in a couple of minutes what activities you have been undertaking, and what you've been doing, or what the La Pointe Krebs Foundation has been up to lately.
Well, as the head of development committee, we take serious to the mandate from the county that we're supposed to be working to restore and renovate that old building in sight, and we've done that. As you can imagine, however, a lot of people think you can raise millions of dollars in Pasca Gula, you cannot do that. The building needs about a million, twenty-five thousand more to complete it. The, the museum, of course, is finished, Kiomi did the interior work, the design, it's won both national and international awards. The development committee has been working for the past two, two and a half years to reach out to try to find those necessary monies. I can announce tonight that over two and two and a half year period, we have worked with the legislature and all of our legislative delegation. There is pending on the governor's desk House Bill sixteen forty-six, which is a funding mechanism for the Mississippi Department of Human Services. Paragraph fifteen carries a line item, a direct payment through the MDAH to the La Pointe, to, to, it'll go through the county, but it is for one million dollars. That will almost finish the restoration and renovation of the building. We have worked over the last few years with the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, dealing with Katrina monies that were, that were contracted out to finish older buildings in the state. The individuals had to sign a contract, and if they did not repair those buildings pursuant to the Archives and History standards, then those monies would have to be obtained or gotten back. The monies they got back were a hundred and forty something thousand dollars, and we were able to manage, and to work with the board of directors of that entity, and we've acquired the hundred and forty thousand dollars. Contracts have been let now with Albert and Associates of Hattiesburg Historical Architects and J. O. Collins, and it looks to be as if we are on the path to make sure that that building has been restored and renovated as the mandate given us. And so the commissions work very hard, we thank our legislative delegation for all of them working very hard. We also thank the MDAH and all the individuals involved, we will keep working towards that. Restoration and renovation is not the final story. Monies will still be needed, of course, to keep the upkeep, et cetera, of a building that's nearly three hundred years old. It is a bright spot in Pasca Gula. The records are showing that four hundred and fifty to five hundred people are coming to that site every year, and they're coming from all over the country and all over the world. A thousand young people are going out there every spring, from the fourth grades all over this district, and they're being exposed to the history of this place through their Mississippi history courses, et cetera. So it's a bright spot, it's a good spot, it's what we consider, and what MDAH and others consider, a national monument. Finally, we also have a grant request in to the French Historical Society of Paris, France, and New York City, and we're waiting to hear from that. However, I would think now that the Cathedral of Notre Dame has caught on fire, we may have a problem with that one, but we are on track.
Any other questions from the council? Bob, how long is your term?
Five years.
Okay.
I believe that's right, five.
All right. Is there a nomination from any member of the council to fill the position? Is there a nomination from any member of the council to fill the position?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Hearing no further nominations, is there a motion? The motion is to approve Robert Krebs for a five-year term on the La Pointe Krebs Foundation Board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. You may be excused.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, the next one is the Jackson County Utility Authority. And we had three applicants for that spot, one of whom withdrew late last week.
Mr. Burrow, if I may, Mr. Powell, who also applied, is not able to be here this evening for either one of the interviews.
Okay. All right. But I understand that one of the applicants is here, Guy Moore Jr. Mr. Moore, would you please come on up?
Good evening. Not sure how this works, so I'll leave it in your hands.
Go right ahead. If there's anything you want to tell us, let me get you started. Why are you interested in serving on the Jackson County Utility Authority as Pascagoula's representative on that body?
Well, I think it probably relates to multiple reasons. I have to say that I wasn't looking to serve before someone came and suggested that I might have something to add to it. There's been a, you know, over the period that my wife and I have moved back here in retirement, which has been about six years now, going on seven, we've, I've heard a lot about the JCUA, but I didn't know a lot about it. So when it was suggested, I, that I consider submitting my resume, I didn't just rush and do it. I do have, since I've retired, I made a conscious effort not to seek corporate board-type positions because I spent forty years with somebody else deciding what my time was going to be spent on, and I wanted to have some of my time. However, I was interested after a year or two of just kind of cooling down after a forty-year professional career in contributing to worthy causes, and that would include charitable church and ultimately, community. So, I spent some time after it was suggested that I consider submitting my resume, trying to learn about the JCUA, because I'm not the type of person who just wants to, just serve on a board for purposes of serving on a board. And so I had some discussions with knowledgeable folks, including I spent the better part of the morning with Mr. Heidelberg, just not really to listen to positions or to campaign, because at that point, I didn't know whether I wanted to be on the, on the board or not, or the authority or not, I just wanted to understand what was involved. And what I found out is that there's a lot going on there. There's, it's not just a staid organization that just does things kind of by rote. There are a lot of dynamic things happening that I, that I think that I have some expertise from a financial standpoint that could help. You've seen from my resume that my background is, is public accounting. All forty years of my career as a CPA, which I'm now a retired CPA, I'm not, don't have an active license. And my specialty in that area, in public accounting was auditing. And many people, when they hear auditing, first of all, many people when they hear CPA think taxes. I don't do taxes. But when they, when many people hear auditing, they, they have a picture of people who do numbers and have green eyeshades and things of that nature. The fact is, at least at the level that I did auditing and supervised audits, and then they had national responsibility for audit practice and policies. At those levels, you have to actually get in and understand a business in order to do an effective audit. So, one of the things I think I developed over time was the ability to do that, and I think I could bring that type of expertise to the authority. Some of my audits that I supervised going way back included in the public sector, such as cities and ports and things of that nature. But that, that in and of itself is not something that I would put forth as being necessarily a specific qualification. I just throw that out there as being something among my, among my other experiences.
Any questions from members of the council? Hearing none? Is there a nomination to fill a five-year term on the Jackson County Utility Authority?
I think it's six, actually.
Is it six? Okay. I stand corrected?
I'm sorry. I probably shouldn't interrupt.
My apologies. So, you're nominating Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Powell, I understand he could not be here, but no ex, but no emergency that we know of. Business thing, okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further nominations. All those in favor of appointing Guy Moore to a six-year term on the Jackson County Utility Authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
I think, thank you. And I, you know, actually, I'm sorry.
Know what you're getting into?
Well, I don't know that, but I do hope, I do hope to come back and meet with you periodically as the Pascagoula...
That would be fantastic. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, our Pascagoula Redevelopment Authority Board Interviews. The position had, has had two applicants, again Joseph Powell, who unable to be here, and Alan Suddath. So, Mr. Suddath, do you want to come forward and tell us why you want to be reappointed to the Pascagoula Redevelopment Authority?
I appreciate the opportunity to have served in this position. Seems like, as best I can count, eight years now.
I'm sorry, how many years?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight. And we've, we've come a long way since our early inception. We had plans that we've made some adjustments to. But here in the last several years, I think we've gotten on a path that really has turned out to be a great opportunity for the city of Pascagoula. Appreciate what the city has, has been able to accomplish through the PRA, and I'd like to be a part of that continued success. We've, we've moved from things like filling vacancies with stores and new shops through the Anchor Square process, and getting folks on Delmas Avenue and Market Street. I'm very proud of how that's been able to evolve over time the last several years. There are other projects, but the biggest one has been the downtown revitalization efforts that have been going on to include the Riverfront project. Through, through the last several years, the city has been able to obtain private funds through private donations to help with, with the startup of not just the residency component of that riverfront, but also the commercial side. We are in the midst of using, we're in the process of using that million dollars that has been raised to match a million-dollar grant that we'll be applying for through the Economic Development Association to put toward the construction of that commercial building. Commercial building has evolved over time. It was office space with an idea of trying to have the residency and office space worked as a live, work, and play kind of location. But part of the way to kind of, I think, a better vision has been to use part of that commercial space for an incubator innovative center, and that's what the MSET folks and EDA, I'm using a lot of acronyms here, but several partners have come together to help us work toward something that I think would be even better for the city and a better driver of disposable income and residence to the downtown area. So, a lot has happened, but we've got a lot of work left to do. It's been, again, it's been a privilege to be able to serve in that capacity, and I'd like to be able to serve a little bit longer to be able to see some of this to fruition. And be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Alan, one question is, what is the timeframe for the commercial development on the riverfront? I know that, I wouldn't call it going strong, but there's been progress on the residential construction that's there. What about the commercial side of that, the buildings that are envisioned to, I guess, to the east and to the north of where the residential construction is going?
The east is the commercial property I was referring to. We are part, we are entering the grant application process right now. In fact, we are applying for the grant through Mississippi Enterprise for Technology. So we'll, we'll hopefully hear back soon that we've been awarded a million-dollar grant. So with the two million, hopefully announced within the next, they say thirty to sixty days, maybe we'll find if we got that grant. If so, then we begin construction shortly thereafter, so whatever the construction time would be from that point forward.
And, and again, I'm just asking some questions because I'm... Go ahead.
No.
I, I've said, because I'm coming from a little bit of ignorance here. The, the plans for the commercial use of that, I know there has been some talk about Chevron maybe putting some administrative offices or doing something with that. Have there been any other commitments or discussions with other businesses to occupy or use that commercial space?
So the second floor is pretty much, we've, Chevron has committed to leasing that. The first floor would be primarily the innovation shared office space. The folks at the Mississippi Enterprise for Technology are, manage an innovation center in Hattiesburg and also one at NASA. And so they're working to fill that with some tenants. They are in preliminary discussions with one of their current tenants in Hattiesburg to help fill part of the space below.
And how long is your term?
Five years, I believe. Yes, sir.
Anything else from the council? Are there any nominations for the five-year position currently held by Mr. Suddath on the Pascagoula Redevelopment Authority?
I'd be proud to make a motion to reappoint Alan Suddath to the Pascagoula Redevelopment Authority for another five-year term.
One second.
Okay. Hearing no further nominations. All those in favor of reappointing Alan Suddath to a five-year term on the Pascagoula Redevelopment Authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Appreciate that, and as Guy said earlier, love to have you all come and be part of our meetings in any way in which we can help as we continue to try to pursue your vision, I'd be glad to do so.
Where are you meeting today?
Sir?
You meet at where the...
We meet here at the council, the...
Yeah, we moved to the city manager's conference room.
Now we're the second Monday of every month, but we'll make sure to get that, that notification to you. We have sneaked over to the foundation meeting once while because they got free coffee and snacks, but...
I heard something about snacks.
Mr. Suddath? Maybe I missed the time on those meetings, what time do you guys meet?
Nine o'clock, I'm sorry, I did not say that. I think it's nine.
You may have said it, I'm sorry.
No, it's... We just recently moved, we were on a Thursday, and we've moved it now to Monday and start at night. But I'll get that, make sure I work with...
Yeah, we will, we'll make sure we get...
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Alan.
I'm going to step out for a moment, and Reverend Jones will handle the docket of claims.
Can we get a motion to accept the docket claim? First, are there any questions and remarks? Anybody have anything that they want to discuss concerning the docket claim?
Make a motion, we approve the claims, Doc.
Got a mokin in session, are we ready to vote? We don't have to vote. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm with it. I'm learning right here. I don't want to get myself in any trouble.
Don't let wife tip me on that.
Okay, going to the mayor council items, item 13B1, that was requested by Councilwoman Calmer regarding utilities.
So one of the things that I keep hearing is utility rates have doubled. So I wanted to take just a minute to help people understand what may be the issue. The city is not waiving any fees or late fees or trip fees for disconnection and reconnection. We can't do this in order to be good stewards of the city's resources. The city can't allow customers to float along while other customers and taxpayers are footing the bill. So that's number one. Number two, the city, the city of Pascagoula and the council updated deposits this past October to better ensure collection. What this means is, you sign up for ServiceNow, and you're required to put up a larger deposit more in line with the anticipated usage. Number three, the city of Pascagoula and the council increased trip fees to help offset operational costs. Both of these items were significantly out of line. That was the, the deposits and the increased trip fees. Okay, so what that means is, if you fail to pay your bill, a customer fails to pay their bill, the city will charge the customer for the attempts to collect the bill. So those two things have changed since October. Number four, the city of Pascagoula and the council also amended the sewer demand charge on the utility bill. I see a lot of people making that comment. What's this sewer DEM fee? Okay, so that is a small portion of your bill, and that fee, I believe, is twenty-nine thirty-nine. I don't get the pleasure of looking at my utility bill, my husband does. So the sewer demand charge, along with the sewer rate, helped offset utility infrastructure repairs and other sewer-related expenses. Okay, given those changes, no one's utility bill should have doubled monthly, shouldn't even come close to doubling. But if you have a disconnection fee, a reconnection fee, that's where you're going to see something that looks like doubling or comes close to that. So, if you haven't had a disconnection or reconnection fee, and your bill's really high, there may be a problem. That's when you need to call the city utility office, because you may have a leak. There could be a problem on our end, there could be a problem on your end, there could be a problem on both ends. But somebody, if you call the city utility office, somebody's going to help you. We'll come investigate, we'll help, they'll help you out, not me, because I wouldn't know where to look, but they'll help you out. If this happens, there's usually a pretty simple way to find the answer, and somebody here is really good at helping find that. Happened at my house. I called Mr. Quarter. He helped my husband find it. And we ended up paying the bill, because we had a problem. So, the city's happy to help, and more than likely, it's, we're reading the bill wrong, or, and that's what we were doing. We were reading, reading the bill wrong. So, I hope that helps. Simple, 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 but maybe it just took somebody pointing all those things out.
Thank you, Jennifer Wellsad. All right. The next item on the agenda is actually mine, 13E1 Work Session. The reason I'm raising this issue is, I think everyone on the council is well aware that the number of projects we have, or that are in the city, which need to be done, both in terms of roads and infrastructure, exceed the available funds. And I know that we are all hit consistently and constantly with requests from various persons in our ward about a variety of infrastructure issues. At the same time, perhaps unbeknownst to most citizens, and even to some council members on occasion, there are significant infrastructure issues that are not apparent, but are well-known to our engineering staff and to other members of the city. And I think it would work well and best serve the people who put us here to get together at a meeting that is dedicated just to roads and infrastructure so that we collectively can come to an agreement on what our priorities should be so that the staff know what direction... can come to an agreement on what our priorities should be so that the staff know what direction to take and how we're going to spend the limited resources that we have. We have monies that are coming in, both not only our own tax receipts, but as well from the county as part of our share of the monies that our citizens pay to the county in adverum taxes. So, I think a, a meeting, perhaps, I don't know, Jackie, how long it would have to take, an hour, maybe hour and a half, but I think it would serve us well to have a meeting dedicated just to those issues and hopefully give city employees direction for at least the remainder of the fiscal year, if not the remainder of the calendar year, on what projects, both infrastructure and road, need to be addressed and the priority in which they need to be addressed. So, I simply ask, if we could come up with a date today in May that would be available and convenient for everyone, then I'd like to set that meeting.
If I may, Mr. Burrow, thank you for that. Whenever you suggested that last week, I know that staff were, were very fine, we thought that was a great idea, and Jackie is already working on compiling a list of projects that are with a, below the threshold that Ms. Calmer had emailed us about. With that being said, I would recommend that we do it the second week of May, which would be in between. If y'all want to do it the first week, I will be out of town with my little girl's surgery, but, and that's fine, but I would recommend the second week of May if at all possible.
Are you talking about...
May the, week of May thirteen.
Thirteen to seventeen. Okay.
That would be available every day but the sixteenth on that week.
Are we talking, meeting the construction, or we just calling a list of, of putting our, first thing first? What, what are we, what are we doing? Are we ready to start construction, or are we just making lists?
Well, I think that there are certain projects that are what they call shovel-ready, but no, we, what I think this is more about is which projects are...
Just putting, what's, what's...
Yes, sir. Right, but then we also can update you on those projects which are ready to go.
Yeah.
To, I mean, sorry.
Is there any way possible we could do it, like the last week of April up to the third? And the only reason I'm asking is, you know, May is graduation month. I have another one graduating this year.
Is he going off the payroll?
Maybe Thursday or Friday, but I'm, I'm out of town the weekend.
No, he's not going off the payroll. Do they ever go off the payroll?
I don't know. I'm still waiting.
All right, so that seems May the second?
That's a Thursday?
Look, whatever's good for...
That's what Jackie's...
I need to appease them if they're gonna try to appease me, but if, if it doesn't work, then just let me know that. I'll...
If that works for everybody, I can do the second. I'll just be out of town the week before, but I can have everything ready before them.
Well, that's kinda quick, so that's fine. Go, go back to the thirteenth week.
Okay.
Tuesday or Thursday afternoon?
Either day is fine with me.
Oh, Scott, did he be out on the Thursday?
Let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday afternoon?
So, we're talking Tuesday, Tuesday the fourteenth, is that fine with everyone?
What time?
Um, presumably as early as possible, but Jennifer, I mean, Jennifer, I know you work...
Well, anytime, anytime after eleven-thirty's good with me, but...
Okay, so is five o'clock all right with everyone?
Five P.M.
All right, five P.M., May fourteenth.
And we could always change it at the next meeting, but...
I, I, I will say something, and perhaps Ryan may be the only one who understands this, I'm on a three-week federal court trial calendar. Uh, I think I will go May sixth, but there is a small chance it would be May thirteenth. I will know tomorrow morning where, when I'm going. But beyond that, I, I would go ahead and just set it at my agreement of the council for May fourteenth at five P.M. here in the council chambers. Okay? All right. Uh, is there anyone signed up to speak? And I think he is departed.
Ms. Lusby, she's only left, Mr. Vice led, Ms. Vlos.
Come on up, Ms. Vlos, it's good to see you again.
I was supposed to be here, see everybody. I've been...
Could you pull the mic out?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Are we here? You're behind us, ma'am.
This ties in a little bit with some of your other things and what you're talking about doing, so it's probably a good time for it. But in February, February seventh, we had two bad accidents on Catapa Avenue where I live, which had been waiting to have more, you know, it's been a hazard for a long time. And it prompted me to sort of get started on coming down here and seeing somebody about it, and the next opportunity came on the, the day before the Pascagoula-Mardi Gras parade, when it occurred to me that I was gonna have a yard, a yard full of people coming, and it would be nice if they could use both ends of the driveway, for example, to park. So, I came down here and asked the person who was finding people, and you were not here, he mentioned you, and, and Mr. Quarter got picked to talk with me, and we have run into each other for many years off and on, so that was good. So, the main thing that I had on my mind was getting the yard debris, branches, and so forth that had been stacked in the end of the driveway since the last week in January, when I was doing cleaning for the new year, and it's helpful to be able to go in and out of the driveway, the way our house is constructed. So, before I got home, stopping by Jerry Lee's to pick up a king cake, he had miraculously accomplished getting that done. But while I was here, I gave him a whole list of things, starting with ones that were a real problem, and trying to keep some that cost almost nothing, and I was very happy to hear tonight how far he's gotten on some of that. But let me make a couple comments about some of the things. Some of them, does everybody, do all of you know where Catapa Avenue is?
Yes, ma'am, that's my hall.
Okay, you have dri, yes, I...
Yes.
You have driven down it. You know, it's one half mile long, it collects, it connects Telephone Road with Pascagoula Street.
Yes.
And it is very close to Pepco and so forth. You go across the little bridge there and turn up. It has a railroad track running across it and one running down it, and I understand their big plans to take care of some things. But right now, speeding traffic down there is a really, really, really big problem. And a number of years ago, when they did a traffic count for different places in the city, it had the highest traffic count of any place in Pascagoula that was not on Highway Yini. That may have shifted some, but it has a very high traffic count on that. Part of it is because it is a shortcut to everywhere, and it is used by everyone. It has become, in the last few years, the people who are coming off of I-ten heading to Ingalls in the morning have discovered that they can miss a whole bunch of red lights if they turn on Catapa, get lucky when they hit Pascagoula, go all the way down to Pascagoula, and go, they can go straight into Ingalls. They start at four in the morning, they go down there at a speed that exceeds the speed limit on Telephone Road, and it definitely probably contributes to some of the problems at Pepco that were with their early start in the morning of trying to get things done that. I can see that to some extent in listening this time and other times, but they go at very high speed. They know that there are railroad tracks involved unless it's their first time down there, and when they discover it for the first time, their car sort of leaps and usually of, you know, so you know the situation there. There are some things that could be done that are almost no cost. Most of the residents on the east end where I live, which is going into Telephone Road, take care of the grass along the right of the roadway there. The ones on the other end need some more help with it. Some of them are vacant lots, some of them are, because the city maybe once a year trims along on this particular street, and it's a very narrow street, and it is not striped on the center, and the stripe going into Telephone Road is almost obliterated. So, Mr. Quarter's arranged for striping to be high up there even though it's... The two accidents were very bad, and the first one, two cars were totaled. It was one of those accidents that could be several people at fault, but one was legally at fault, and then immediately a week following, there was another one, so that's not a good thing to be having there. The street striping will help a little bit. In the first one, diverting traffic was a problem because everyone was rushing home to take the shortcut going home also. At least three school buses from Pascagoula Goché and Moss Point Schools use this as a thoroughfare. They all had to turn around on a narrow street, which is, for those of you who have been school bus drivers and other things know, is an absolute no-no unless, you know, you can do that. But anyway, some things are needed in getting started with clearing the edges of the road where people haven't, because there's no place to pull off if you have to, getting people to stop there, unloading things in the center, putting some police people out there at four A.M., would probably cut down some of the speeding. We have wildlife in our area. My backyard is a beautiful natural wildlife barrier on county land. It has turtles, possums, raccoons, and they get hit by the speeding cars going down there. On Monday morning, there was a possum and a raccoon both dead in the road when I went to take my stuff to the post office to mail my taxes off. But there are some low-cost things that I think that you could do with that, and getting it so that it's clearly defined that you, that there are two sides to this road. It is a double, it was arranged to have a double line all the way down, but that was never done, and so everybody goes down the middle, and you see where, but that's in doing there. But getting the sides trimmed will help because that will give a place for people in emergencies and for those vehicles that are that. In the long term, you need a sidewalk because everyone walks in that area, there's very heavy foot traffic, there's no place for them to walk except on the road and someone else's property, including all the business properties in that area. And I mean, lots of foot traffic, not just a little bit of foot traffic. Okay, so...
So, just to, just to follow up on that with the council, had a great conversation...
You have, you have a list.
I do, I have a, I have a list from Ms. Vlos, and we've had a good conversation, and, you know, one of the things that we did after we met, of course, the debris and the trash was picked up within a couple hours.
That is not continuing quite so well. It took them...
I noticed that. I was done the other day, and I avoided making a phone call for that, so...
It took them two more weeks to come by again and pick up the neighbor's stuff which had been sitting out there the same length of time, and they still have not gotten a bag at the corner of the Bennion's fence.
That's correct.
They, they cut the grass that the owner of the property across the street, which I think is South Mississippi Surgeons, does not cut. They have put branches and a bag of trash that has been out there for at least over...
At least, at least a month.
At least a month, yeah. Okay.
So, whenever, whenever I was out there the day checking on things, I noticed that one, and I've called that in.
Good.
But just to follow up with council, Ms. Turner's aware of the striping issue, and as funds come available, that will be taken, taken care of. Mr. Scruggs has been made aware of all the code issues on Catapa, and their department's looking at all those issues. As far as the grass goes, that, that cutting contract should be, I think, in the first part of May to get that done, so that should be where that goes. So, we've, we've been very lucky, actually, we were fortunate to be able to have that conversation at a very good time because we are moving on those issues now, so...
If CSX Railway, who is responsible for cutting the grass by that area and in that lady's yard and so forth, they need a phone call prompt to remind them that that's their responsibility to do that, and on the drainage area coming out from the surgery center, they don't pick up their part there, and, you know, not just...
And as far as the traffic goes, just as the council knows, chief was made aware of this as well, and they've increased some patrols in that area trying to catch those speeders, and they have been more diligent on that area as well, so...
They go up and down during the daytime sometimes, but it would really help if they would do something on the early morning things there because they fly down that and think they, there's something about, it's shorter for them and they discover the traffic leg thing, which helps, but they do this in the afternoon too. Like when the wrecks were there, the two wrecks about three fifteen, when the school buses were running, the fires, if, if they send a fire station up from Lake Avenue, which they do only, supposed to do only when it's necessary, but they tend to do it at least once or twice a day, and having a fire truck and a school bus going like this on there doesn't work. Anyway, thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And thank you for...
All right. Is there a motion to enter into a closed session to determine whether or not an executive session is necessary?
No move.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will pause right now while we go into executive session. We certainly appreciate your time and attention to this meeting, and we look forward to seeing you next time.
Coming back into open session, no action was taken in executive session. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution authorizing the use of a city right-of-way at Cedar Street?
No move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the use of right-of-way at Cedar Street?
No move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn until May?
Just adjourn.
Just adjourn. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.